And call the meeting to order. If you please stand for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the good republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have a couple of items to take care of before we get into the work session. The first item we have is a public hearing scheduled at seven o'clock on Local Law Number Five, Vehicle and Traffic Permit on Truck Weight. Notice of Public Hearing, please take notice, the Town Board of Tana Cornwall will hold a public hearing on the fourth day of October 2021 at seven o'clock PM at Town Hall 183 Main Street, Cornwall, New York. On proposed local law of the year 2021 entitled the Local Law Amending Section 143 of the Town Code of Tana Cornwall entitled Vehicle and Traffic to Limit Truck Weights on Angola Road and Mineral Springs Road. The purpose of this law, Local Law, is to promote the public health, welfare, and safety by amending Town Code Section 143-29, Schedule Six, Trucks Over Certain Weight Excluded. The limit truck weight on a copy of the proposed Local Law is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and available for inspection by interested persons during the Town Clerk's business hours. The Town Board will, at the above date, time, and place, hear all persons interested in the subject matter hereof. Persons may appear in person or by agent. All written communications addressed to the Board must be received by the Board at or prior to the public hearing. By order of the Town Board, Tana Cornwall, not a McGee Town Clerk. Okay, before I open the hearing, I just want to make a couple of comments. I mean, obviously, those who've been involved in the issue, in the residents on Angola Road and Mineral Springs, we've had discussions over the past several weeks, a couple months actually, and the Board discussed it, our attorney reviewed, weight limits and so forth, but I do want to start off on a note that is going to say, we're going to hold the public hearing, but, an attorney will explain a little more, but the county has already contacted me the end of last week and said that they will not authorize the town setting the limits, the truck limits, the weight limits on Angola Road. They said it's their policy not to have weight limits on any of the county roads, and they don't want to make an exception at this point. So Steve, maybe you can just touch on how the law works.
Sure. There's, for town roads, the town has jurisdiction. For county roads that are within a town, the town and the county have concurrent jurisdiction over certain specified matters listed by statute as to what can be, what can be regulated here. However, since the county owns the road, the county has sole determination of putting up signs on roadway. It's the county's property. The town can enact the law, but the town can't put up the signs. So you really have to work with the county in order to come up with a local law which regulates vehicle traffic on county roadways, and you're trying to work with the county on this. Unfortunately, right now, the county's policy is that county roads are built to specifications that can handle truck weights, and the county is very reluctant to relax that policy in regard to any county roadways. We're trying to explain to them and get them to see that these two roads are different, that there's a special reason why these roads should be treated differently than other county roads. Those conversations have to be ongoing, but at present, the county is not willing to, to recognize any regulations that the town enacts as far as truck weights on Angola Road and Mineral Springs. So, a public hearing, you can either leave it open or you can close it, but to enact the local law without the county partnering on this would be futile. So, that's where we're at.
And the county could actually do it on their own?
Oh, yeah.
The county could do it without the town?
Yes, the county could.
They could impose the limits, post a sign. So, what I'd like to do is, I'm going to open the public hearing. We'll get the comments from the public. I plan on trying to contact the county executive, hopefully tomorrow, because this was a decision made by the commissioners in Public Works, and see if the county executive will give some understanding to the situation that we're faced on Angola Road and Mineral Springs Road, and see if he will yield on this. And I even pointed out that even for us for six months, right now, West Point's saying this is probably going to go on until spring. So even if they would allow us to do it, just in this particular situation, which is totally unusual, this is not just normal, everyday traffic. This is something that these routes are being used specifically for hauling all this material from West Point down to Highland Sandy Gravel. So, I mean, going on the basis that if they won't give it to us permanent, maybe we can get it for the six or eight months that the trucks are going to be there just to keep them off, let them find their other route, and then, you know, we'll go back to the way that it was. So, at this point, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak, just give your name and address to the clerk, and we'd like to hear your comments. Yes, Tom?
My name is Tom Carrato. I don't know what to say. I came here feeling great until a few minutes ago. Living on Angola Road, I live, I border the southbound ramp to 9W. So before seven o'clock in the morning, I get to hear the dump trucks coming over the bridge, which is now higher, so it gives them that nice shot coming down. They like to go as fast as they can so that they get momentum as they go up the hill. So you hear that sound more like you're living near an airport and planes are landing. Then, once they make their drop, they come back. But when they come back, they're in a rush, you know, you can't blame them, they're in a rush. They come flying down that hill, and they have to screech on their brakes to make the turn onto the ramp. So I get to hear them on the other end. So you cannot sleep past seven o'clock in the morning, no matter what you want to do. All day long, all you hear are trucks going back and forth. I mean, I wrote the thing in the Local, and that pretty much says it. What do we have to, I know you're going to, you're going to contact Orange County. What do we do? Because I'm not going to just let this continue. I mean, who do we talk to? Give me contacts. I'll get people together to call them. I'm going to start calling the trucking companies too, and Highland Stone. I mean, they're part of this also. So I think people on Angola Road have to come together and say, okay, we got people, West Point's not going to listen. But we got somebody who wants to sell us stuff down on 32. Well, I'm not buying anything from them ever. So I'd like them to know that they're losing customers. I think the trucking companies should know how we feel. I don't know if none of, I don't know if any of this is going to do any good, but it might be feel a little bit better. I mean, I can't just sit there.
I understand.
I mean, it is so annoying all day long. All you hear is "Mmm, mmm." And then you get them three or four at a time. I made a calculation, because I did look into how many runs they make, and at that point, they were making 80 to 90 runs a day. Now, that's one way and then back. So you're talking about 160 to 180 times during one day that a truck comes roaring past your house. It's no longer country. It's, I might as well go live in a strip mine. You know, it's, all you hear is trucks going back and forth. And one comes down and one goes up, you know, you see them, you know. Anyway, setting up, but I'll get more information from you tomorrow.
And we will too. We're going to follow up.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Andy Piskowski, 479 Angola Road. I think Tom pretty much covered a lot of the things that are annoying everyone. I will correct them. West Point has told me that they're going to cap it at 200 trips a day, but what they were saying was, that was dumping off at the quarry and also the other site, which means it's actually 400 trips on the road. So it's down and back. So, you know, it's a lot of traffic. There's a lot of hidden driveways on Angola Road. There's a lot of blind spots on Angola Road, and the road just is not built for that type of traffic. And I agree with you, Dick, after listening to the Army Corps of Engineers, they're very noncommittal about the end of this, and it sounds like it's going to go into Maine next summer, and it all is contingent on the weather. And we know no one's going to predict the weather. So it's just, it's, it's going to be gone for a while. And if anyone really lives on Angola Road, you look at the road, the road is stressed out now. After the winter time and all these trucks going down, we're going to see some significant disintegration on the road. And it's not a very wide road now. It's been cut off several times. So we get back to who's going to pay for the repairs. You are, and I am, the county's going to pay for it. And I'm not so sure, they're probably going to want to cap it again. So we're going to cap three times, if I'm not mistaken, you know. So we're, we're at a dead end. There's one other thing that the Army Corps of Engineers told me classified, and also the Community Affairs, he, it was dead silence when I asked him, what are they dumping down on their property on the bottom of Mineral Springs? It's right before Trout Brook. So there's about four postings relative to permits. And I asked them, is it lead-based film? And he told me it was classified. And I asked him, well, if I, he said, file a foil. I've filed about two, 200 to 300 foils for the state of New York, and I know one thing, it's not very easy to get a response on any foils with the government. So I said, I'm just asking what the substance is. And they gave me no response. I do know when you dump contaminated soil, there's a process to it. You can't have any standing water, and it's got to be tarred underneath. And it's their property, but it is, there's a lot of standing water against one pile, and there's, I didn't see any tart underneath the other pile. So, you know, I think we all have wells on that road, and I think it's just a matter of integrity that West Point tells us what they're doing on the road. And at the end of the day, West Point has become a really bad neighbor. And I think that's what it comes down to. And I think they're doing a really bad marketing job of what their, what their connection is with the surrounding communities.
I agree. And I did speak to the Garrison Commander, which I had conveyed, and I conveyed it to the Board. When I asked if they were being paid for the material that's being hauled out of Highland Sandy Gravel, the Garrison Commander told me that that was confidential information that she couldn't reveal whether it was. The bottom line is this, and we're at a critical point, because winter is coming, we've got school buses that are going to be out there, and it can pose a real hazard to the residents, but also with a lot of the school buses and kids out there waiting. So I am going to really push it with the county executive and see if he will work with the commissioner. And like, I'm only looking for six, eight months, temporary, I don't care anyone cares here. If we can get it imposed, after that, hauling is all done, we'll remove the restriction and they can go back to normal. But I don't think it's going to hurt the county policy at all to let the town put a temporary limit on that road. So we will follow up with that. Anyone else who speaks? Chief?
I just want to point out one thing. It's ironic what the county said, because Thursday to 16th, they reached out to us because they were doing work on the road. They wanted a police officer stationed there with them on the 17th because of the amount of dump trucks they were worried about, their employer's safety. So we didn't put a car out there all day. Of course, there were no dump trucks because they radioed that we're there all day, but they felt it was on the safe, Thursday, that they wanted an officer there Friday. And the other thing, 20-some years ago, I know we, in New Windsor, we had an issue with tractor-trailers on Union Avenue County Road, and the county basically said to the town, it's, that portion's your road, it's a county road, but you can set the weight on it. I verified that with George Myers earlier on the weekend. He said, yeah, the county didn't want to do it. We just did it, and it was fine. So I don't know if that's worth looking into. He thought it was Mr. Crotty's office that did it.
And I think what it's come down to, Chief, is a change of policy on the part of the DPW out there. Yes, sir?
I'm Norm Krager. I don't live on Angola Road. What time did they start entertaining?
6:45.
What?
About 6:45.
This, they sound silly. I can imagine you folks.
Sir, sir, to address your comments.
Yeah, okay, I can imagine them staging, inviting a wonderful breakfast at 6:45 or whatever for the commissioner and all the people, and their Cornwall people that are in the area to do a 10-minute documentary that would take six hours to make, and really invite them, you know, and see if they even show up in the morning for breakfast. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, next, Adam.
I live Hartman. I own the Cornwall Manor at 174 Angola Road, and I live off of Four One Hill Road. Well, I live halfway, you know, up Black Rock, and you could hear them at 6:45 with a roar. But I can't rent my lower house anymore, which has four guest rooms in it, because everybody plug-ins. On Friday, I had all West Point people in there. I told them to go down and talk to the Garrison Commander, but that's who was waking them up. They, they got told it was classified, and they wouldn't answer them either. But aside from the fact that weight limit or whatever, I have a, I have a perfect vantage point for all the people going into Jones Farm, going across into the daycare center across the road, the dog park and stuff. These trucks are immense. As far as, I don't know if they've got the drivers on a time limit or what, but they are dangerous. And after one of my guests almost got killed, I texted Todd, and they put cars across the way, and they slowed it down for a while. But, you know, when you go to turn into Jones Farm, you have to almost stop because they have a driveway with culverts on either side, so you have to turn in. These guys almost hit, run into the back of these little cars, turning in there, and they don't seem to stop. Somebody yesterday told me of going down the lower part of Angola, heading towards 32, that a woman was waiting to turn into her driveway and left. And she had to sit, she was waiting because there was a car coming the other way. The truck didn't stop, she was watching him in her rearview mirror. He swerved around her, the car coming in the opposite direction, ended up in a ditch. And luckily, they were both fine, the cars were both fine. But the drivers are being really irresponsible, trying to get out of Four One Hill Road. You know, we got, you come around a curve on one side, you come around a curve on the other side. You can't see them coming. There's kids waiting there for the school bus. The school bus has stopped there for a good three, four minutes, getting the kids from both sides of the road and everything else. These guys come barreling across through there. They're there before all of the buses come to pick up. And so I understand the weight limit thing, and if that can stop them, great. But, you know, they come in sets of tubes, they pass, for some reason, right on the flats in front of us and stuff. And no offense to anybody here who is one of the nursery school parents, but then, when the parents come up to pick up the kids, they start to make the left-hand turn coming from Cornwall into there without getting all the way to the top of the hill. Okay, the other day, somebody with one of those minivans almost got hit right on the side by one of those trucks. And those trucks, like he said, when they, they're, they're going down that hill, I hear them screeching to make that turn. And when they're coming up the hill, they're throttling up and they get, they get by me, and they go flying on the flat part to Jones Farm. And somebody coming out of Jones is going to get killed either going in or coming out. My guests are in jeopardy as well, and all of those kids going in and out of that in the dog park. It's a really busy stretch right there. And I don't know what to do about the drivers. I certainly don't want to take on the Teamsters and stuff. But, you know, until this thing gets done with the weight thing, something has to be done with these drivers. And I don't know if that means all of us going out there with signs standing in the road saying, yo, slow your ass down, you know, or what, but something needs to stop.
Thanks.
We'll talk later.
Anyone else?
You're going to go out with signs.
Thank you.
We're all here for a good cause, but unfortunately, you explained to us, we're pretty much talking to the choir right now. But keep at, one of the suggestions I was going to make was made by the gentleman up here, have, have a breakfast at the Cornwall Manor. Invite the Garrison Commander, invite the county. I was hoping a county gentleman or lady would be here tonight, because that's who needs to hear all of these stories and the truth of how bad it is. The only comment I would like to make is be careful with the signs. Anybody know how heavy the trucks are now? 10 tons? Why are we lowering it down to five tons? Point of that was, if they're 10 tons and we're cutting it to five tons, our 80 trucks are becoming 160 trucks. They're going to just keep loading up the trucks to stay underneath it.
No, actually, there's a, there's a method to that.
Yeah, there's a wheel axle on that. But then that doesn't fall, doesn't that fall on the town's shoulders to enforce?
Yeah.
Or to fall on the county?
No.
Do we have the equipment?
Enforcement would be Vehicle and Traffic enforcement by the town.
Right. So do we have the equipment?
But that, well, first of all, you don't need equipment, because the five-ton was because I inquired as to, I'm hearing that these trucks loaded are 70,000 to 80,000 pounds. And thinking about what weight limit we would put on it, I found out what the trucks are empty, and they're about 14,000. So with a five-ton, an empty truck can't come back over. So, you know, even if they were able to go another route, if they were empty and it was a higher tonnage. So the five-ton actually eliminates these trucks full or empty.
Empty or full.
Exactly.
Is there any way to look into with the county, some performance bond, some type of, who's going to pay for the road when it crumbles? Because it's just a matter of time.
I can tell you the county's answer. They said the roads are built for heavy truck traffic. That's, that's, I'm just conveying to you what they said. It's going to take, going to the county executive, I think initially, he's the head of the county, obviously, his commissioners that are appointed and all, and I think we just have to emphasize the concern that we have and the impact that it's having on the community.
I would also recommend we keep the public hearing open so that we can get back after some conversations. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I just want, if anybody else hasn't spoken, Andy first. Anyone else who hasn't spoken wants to speak?
Would it be helpful if we, as a board, joined together and, and sent a letter to the county executive about this, and that we're, we're all, we're all concerned about this?
Yeah, I believe we can certainly do that. I want to call him tomorrow and see what his initial response is in terms of, you know, what, I mean, I'm hoping his response would be, let me talk to my commissioners, and then he comes back and says, okay, we'll, we'll agree to the six or eight months or whatever.
And also, and also, if we send these comments, you know, that's, they're very serious comments. I think.
I can give them a minute to certify them.
That'd be fine. If that wasn't, we'll have.
So he realizes.
Anyone else? Andy?
So in regard to the weight, the Army Corps of Engineers said it's a calculated weight. The trucks are supposed to get 17 yards on every trip. I said, I followed them, and I've noticed they're lopsided, which tells me they're misloaded or they're overweight. And once again, he says, no, it's a calculated weight. So I said, you're telling me it's underweight or it's at the weight limit for a triaxle? And he said, yes. I said, and that's an assumption. On construction sites, you can have a lift that calculates the weight. A lot of sites have onsite scales. The state police in, in New York State are the ones responsible for weighing vehicles. They said, no, we're not trained in the Maybrook barracks to do that. And that was it. The only, you know, so it's an assumption about how much weight are on the trucks.
Okay, anyone else?
We're all going to take a vote, though, right?
No, no, we, let me close the public hearing first, Tom.
I don't mean now, but tonight.
Okay. No one else, then?
Wait, this is a public hearing for everything on the agenda?
No, this is a public hearing on the weight limit restrictions on Angola and Mineral Springs. Okay. Entain a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Or wait, you know what? You want to keep it open?
Yes.
All right. Motion to keep the public hearing open?
So moved.
Second discussion, roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
Mr. Andes?
Yes, motion is carried. And actually, we have a regular meeting next week, so the public hearing will be open, so if we have any additional information, we can certainly pick it up next week. I'm hoping we can have a resolution before next week, to be honest with you. So as far as, we have two items that are really on the agenda for action tonight. One is the Local Law Number Five, but obviously, we're going to hold off on that since we've extended the, kept the public hearing open. But the first one is a resolution on the adoption of Local Law Number Three, the zoning amendments. We have heard back from the county. Steve, I think you have a copy of that.
Yeah, they didn't have any substantive comments as far as that, because the only reason it was held open is to wait to receive word from them, and now you have that. So, they're not held open, the reason wasn't acted on.
So then we have the resolution, whereas the Town Board, as before, for consideration of Local Law entitled, a Local Law to revise Chapter 158 of Tana Cornwall, Tana, Town Code entitled zoning. Whereas, following due notice, the Town Board held a public hearing on the proposed Local Law, and therefore, being resolved as follows, the Town Board hereby adopts the above local law, which said local law shall be effective upon publication, posting, and filing in the office of the Secretary of State in Albany. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So.
Second discussion, roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
Mr. Andes?
Yes, motion is carried. Okay, next, we'll be going into the work session. So public comments on any item on the work session. Anyone wishing to speak? On any item on the work session. Take care, Tom. No comments on the public, on the work agenda. Okay. First item we have is a public hearing on the benefit assessment districts, which we do each year. That's scheduled for October 12th at 7:00 PM. Next, have on the agenda for the Firth Cliff Heights Water District, over the past few years, in working with New Windsor, this is the district that we actually get the water from New Windsor to about 140-some properties in Firth Cliff Heights. And so I'm happy to report that we are in a position to actually reduce the water rates for the Firth Cliff Heights Water District customers by 20%. Combination of things, working with New Windsor on administrative costs. There were some new leaders that were installed in the flow, which we've been monitoring for a long period of time. So that's good news for the residents in Firth Cliff Heights Water, so I'll have that for the next meeting. And Steve, that's something we could set up and make an effect in January 1st.
Sure.
The adopted it. Okay. Next item is James Ferrara. They had put in a request for a special use permit. I know James is here tonight, and he's withdrawn that request, and he's asking the Board to consider a zoning change. You want to speak to the Board? I know we have a happier.
Yeah, I feel bad about my plight compared to the situation on the agenda today. Far less insignificant, but, so being that I cannot operate as a licensed, as a New York State licensed, with a New York State liquor license, not a cabaret or a discotheque, I would like to add to the zone to the code, if the Board would consider adding the term, the phrase, I forwarded it to you guys earlier, I sent it via PDF, that if you're not any of the following, you can then, to apply for the special use permit, you would have to then get an application, a successful application from the SLA for the day of permit that allow anyone to serve liquor for a 24-hour period. That way, that would then, that would at least allow me to apply for the special use permit.
Okay.
And other businesses as well. It's not, it wouldn't be just me. If anyone else has a space, anyone that would want to have a small party, a small get-together, I think for kids, right now, to apply for the special use permit, they would have to be a, to serve liquor. They would have to have a liquor license, or be a discotheque, or be a cabaret, to, in order for them to apply for the special use permit, to say, I just want to have a little couple, couple parties for some kids a few times a year because my space is great, and they like it, and I'm in the same boat.
Okay. All right, let me take that into consideration. Say, on Miller Avenue Traffic Concerns, I know, Chief, you had worked with the New Windsor PD with regard to some traffic monitoring on the Miller.
Yeah, they, they put up a, for lack of a better word, a black box speed recorder. Basically, it's just mounted on a pole. Most people wouldn't have known what it was. It just records the speeds. They left it there for a week with me, and then we did it up top, but unfortunately, up top, where they had positioned it, it didn't pick up any speeds. They never checked it once they installed it, so it wasn't recorded. But we have a week of data from down at the bottom. There's a few more vehicles than I would have thought. There was, in the week, there was, 9,800 vehicles went by. 76% below the speed limit. Average speed limit over the speed limit was 33.7, closing, so that would have been going towards 218. The average speed over limit going away, going up towards, well, would have been 36.14. Combined average speed over limit would be 35.7. About 3% of the vehicles were considered excessive speed over limit, that would be over 36. That's a very small number as far as any sort of things. And not to the residents, I mean, any vehicle speed, I'm sure it's, you know, a large number, but in the totality of the vehicles, 3% speeding, you're going to have that on any road, any time, as far as those excessive speeds. It does look like it's under the 85th percentile, which is often used. I'm not a traffic engineer, not too sure what that means, but I think that's good when they're under that number. You can research that a little bit. So, I mean, yes, there are some cars speeding, but it's not excessive. There's cars speeding, they're doing the 31 to 36 is the majority of your speeders. Not really something we would enforce. Again, those 3%, we could be there all day and may never find those people. Like I told you before, this is a complaint we get all over town, speeding on a particular road that people live on. We get it all over brown and all, as you heard today, we get it on the old park, we get it on the 40, we get it into 50, and pretty much every road in town, I get this complaint on.
Okay, thanks, Chief. I did reach out to a traffic engineer, Philip Greeley, and he did submit a proposal, and I've had a couple of phone conversations with him. He, he's estimating $6,900 plus reimbursements to conduct the traffic study. He put in a scope of work, and when I spoke to him the end of last week, I mentioned the He put in a scope of work, and when I spoke to him at the end of last week, I mentioned the data that was collected by the PD. He said that that, he may be able to use that, which would reduce the cost of the, of the study. I think what I'd like to do, Chief, if you could form, form me a report on the data that you have?
Sure.
And if the board's in agreement, I'll forward it to Phil, I'll talk to him this week, and next week, I'll have a refined proposal as to what, what he would be able to do. I mean, I know there's been talk about linear speeds and somehow getting the speed reduction down, reduce to twenty-five based on driveways and distance. Of course, Phil's very familiar with that, but also he can provide some information to the board on that process. So I think the, the thing now is, and even if it turns out, and I'm not saying how the data comes out, but the data doesn't look that bad on speed. But I think having a traffic engineer that specializes in this would be able maybe to recommend signage or other things that could be done to try to, they call it calming the traffic, to try to just slow it down a little bit. And I think the other thing that we really want to consider, because as the chief and I have discussed, and I think the board has too, I mean, every neighborhood would love to have a, a traffic study done and a speed reduction. But I think the fact that there is an elementary school in the middle of the Miller Avenue stretch is something that also the traffic engineer would be able to take into consideration for any, any kind of signage and all in the area. So if the board is in agreement, that's what I'll do, I'll reach out to Phil, I'll get the data from the chief, and I'll forward it to him and have a report for the board at our regular meeting next week. Okay?
I have a question. And where was that black box?
Sir?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, at the end of the meeting, we'll have public comment again, and you'll be able to comment on anything that you would like. Okay, next on drainage issues, Hasbrook and Continental. The one thing that we do have to do with that is the filing the application from the government for the grant for planning. I think that's due the beginning of November, and the engineer would be able to put that together. But we will need a resolution, I think, Steve, correct, to?
To submit the application grant, sure.
Yeah. And I think this will be the opportunity for the board to, and the town to really lay out the conditions at, this is not including Continental, this is based on a letter of intent that was filed earlier this year for the possibility of a planning grant, and as the board knows, we were now informed that it looks that we would be eligible for the planning grant for the Hasbrook area drainage work. So that would be the next step in an effort, hopefully, to be able to get funding for actually building, constructing the drainage system for the Hasbrook, Sheldon, Robert, and that whole area there in terms of trying to, you know, drain the area and eliminate all the flooding and the damage that really has occurred. So I'll have that on the agenda for the resolution for submitting the grant for application for the planning. Town budget, I've submitted it to the clerk's office. I believe copies have been distributed to town board. So we really have to set a budget workshop, we can either do it tonight or next Tuesday night, to set the first meeting up, whatever the pleasure the board is. I mean, you just got the documents, you'll need some time to read there. All right, so next week then, at the regular meeting, we'll set up a first budget, or excuse me, meeting. No shave, November, a request from Chief Hazard to declare November a no shave month for the officers that are participating in a charity event, Chief, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we'll have that on the agenda for the board, this is something each year that the PD asks for. Next is an email from Andy Warren from the Gooleyhausen et cetera. This pertains to the phase two of the Cornwall Sewer Treatment Plant. That's in the works, we finished phase one, we awarded, I think it was about a $6 million contract a couple of months ago for the INI work for the Cornwall collection system. So that work is going to be, be starting. And then we have phase two of the Cornwall sewer plant. So as part of phase two, we wanted to take a look at all the facilities there, and as a result, the engineer has informed us that the, the testing of materials revealed positive asbestos materials down at the plant on the pump building and dewatering. So I have a proposal from Air Environmental Consulting to prepare an asbestos abatement specification with a pre-good walkthrough on the, for the sewer plant so that they can include that in phase two. It's fourteen hundred dollars. So I'll have that for the regular meeting.
That's for the plan of the abatement?
That's the plan for the abatement. Next, the recreation department with the cadets from Lima have requested that on October 30th, Town of Cornwall Halloween Party for Youngsters, ages zero to four, Cornwall Park Pavilion, Rainbow Patient Behind Munter. They're talking about a, having a short parade, one to 2:30, followed by a parade down Main Street Business District with music and so forth. And I know we've talked about setting up something here on Town Hall grounds, I think for October 31st. And I also had a call from one of the business people, and they have an idea of getting a small event for Halloween on Main Street. But I think as I pointed out to Helen this evening, I recently found out that the county is going to be grinding Main Street for repaving the last two days of October, with paving to be taking place on November 1st and 2nd. So that may impact any ideas of maybe having something coming down Main Street. So we'll all get together, figure out what is feasible and safe, and see what we can do for the kids of the community. Elm Street Sidewalk Replacement Project, I have a survey proposal, fifty-six hundred dollars from Mercurio, Norton, Grolli, and Marshall. What we are looking at is, we had a community development block grant that continues some sidewalk work on the area. I guess would be east north of Main Street, nobody really knows where, which side, whether it is east or north. But it's some sidewalk replacement on Bridge Street, Grand Street, and Chestnut. We did get the grant for that through the community development block grant, that's been engineered, while the survey work has been done. In addition to that, this year we applied for sidewalk replacement on Elm, which would be a continuation of Chestnut to replace the sidewalks that would go from Chestnut down to Oak, which would really complete with all new sidewalks. The word is walkability. So if we want to try to make the center of town walkability, we are looking at the various sidewalk locations, see what we can prove. So what I'd like to do is have the board approve the, the survey and have that work done so that when the bidding is done, we can actually include this, which may save us some money. So I'll have that on the agenda for next Tuesday. Community Development Block Grant this for the year 2021 municipal agreement. This is just authorizing the supervisor to sign the, the agreements with the county. Appointment of full-time police officer, Chief Hazard has put in a request, respectful request. The board consider appointing Daniel Ramsey to fill a vacant full-time police position. Officer position, police position that currently exists at the contractual salary of fifty-five thousand two sixty-nine, effective November 1, 2021. Mr. Ramsey has been working in part-time capacity since January of 2021, is a lifelong Cornwall resident, and is reachable on Orange County Civil Service List. So what the chief is recommending by appointing a full-time officer is he anticipates at least one and possibly two or three retirements next year. And by having a full-time officer on staff, actually, partly, we will see a savings on the use of part-time officers, Chief?
Correct, those basically two thousand, those two thousand hours are being filled by part-time right now, which is actually, pays a little bit more than that full-time starting salary, a little more. Slight savings there, but of course, there's a benefits package. But just one of those things, if we lose three officers next year, or two, and we have to go to brand-new people, creates a backlog. Mr. Ramsey's been working well, he's reachable now, if we don't hire him, most likely going to lose him by the end of the year to another agency.
I, I have to agree with the chief, I think this transition, this is really transitional planning, trying to make sure that, you know, we will have the staff to fill when, you know, we do see the retirements and all. So I have that on the agenda. The other thing I wanted to mention to the board, I put it on here, American Rescue Funds reference in police service during COVID. As the American Rescue guidelines have come out, I don't think they're all complete yet, Steve. But I think one of the things that it did do, and I actually talked about it, and I had the payroll and the, the office put together information, is there's a provision in the American Rescue Plan, and the town's going to receive about a million dollars. We received a check for just under five hundred thousand, I think earlier, maybe in June or July. But what I would like to propose to the board, and I have all the information, is that there's a provision in there that allows the use of some of this money to actually recognize the work that was done by our municipal employees during the COVID period. We had a three-month pretty much shutdown from mid-March until about mid-June, and a lot of the staff worked various, various hours and all. So I'm putting together a sort of a formula and a recommended amount that I don't think it's unreasonable to, you know, to give to these employees who stayed on the job and worked a good number of hours when, when a lot of people weren't able to work and everybody was sort of locked down for a period of time. It's a provision that's in the American Rescue. I think it's fair, I think it's reasonable, we had employees who stayed on the job. Police and the sanitation, highway workers were in a rotation, we had staff here at Town Hall who really picked the ball up and ran with it for those few months when, you know, none of us really knew what was going on or where we were going. So if the board is in agreement, I'd like to put together a proposal for next week for the board to consider.
So it's like a one-shot bonus?
One-shot.
Okay.
It's a one-shot, and actually, they say you can give it to people going forward on it. But I think, given what we've been through in the past, it, it is recognition for the fact that, you know, they, they stayed on the job, and, you know, based on a percentage, somewhere here more than fifty percent, somewhere here basically full-time for the whole period as a police officer in the sanitation. So I'll put that together, if the board is in agreement, I think it's something that we, we can do, and I think it's something that we should do. This money came from the federal government to address these issues, and I think, you know, I think the staff deserves it. So I'll work on that, and I'll, I'll try to have it all together for, for the next meeting. Okay, public comments, anyone who should speak on anything, yes ma'am?
Hi.
How are you?
Good. I live on Continental Road, I'm sure you know what I'm going to ask about.
Yes.
So when you said that the paperwork is, you said, said earlier, ready to be sent off or something like that, so are we going to amend it to add Continental?
The engineer is still trying to get the answer from, from Albany. I mean, if we can amend it, we'll, we'll know by the regular meeting, if we can amend it, we will amend it.
So like, so he asked Albany if we can amend it, and waiting for the answer.
He's, he's, right, he's waiting to find out from Albany if we can, if we can amend it.
So coincidentally, my neighbor here, this evening, I looked out my window and there was a little muddy river running down Continental. So I texted my neighbor and I said, well, look at, what is this muddy river? And you want me to tell them?
Well, hello, Nathan, the guy?
Dan, I didn't see you with him, I didn't recognize you.
So I guess for the guy, yeah, they're very nice, the guy's working there, and he goes, hey, you know what? We hit like a vein or a stream, and like, imagine that. I said, oh, yeah, okay, imagine that, all right. So what they were doing, they were pumping, they were pumping out of there, it was coming down this way. They were coming down with like a full, an up front load or whatever you call those, and taking the water out of there and then just kind of dump, dumping it. As I was driving down here, it was further down towards?
My origin.
Yeah.
My origin, yeah.
So I don't know whether that is something that also needs to be considered there. The good thing is, what we had asked before, if there was that kind of a ditch on the right to have the muddy water coming down and drainage that way, that was kind of working for this thing today. You know, as far as getting the, the water off to the side. So I know we had discussed, I guess, last week, whatever, if it cannot be amended, that the town will then look into some sort of a drainage thing for the right side?
Yeah, I, I mean, truthfully, Dan, what we would do, because nothing has been submitted, I mean, obviously, there are issues in the big heavy rains and the two bridge washouts in the 20 years. But we can have the engineer take a preliminary look
Right.
at Continental Road and see what the feasibility is of, of doing some drainage work
Right.
in there to try to collect some of the water. I think what you're talking about now, though, is the, the gas contract.
The gas line being very drilling.
They're actually. And they hit something, so that's what they were, and keep going. The good news is, it's covered now, but the water they were getting out there.
No, but we, we will have the engineer, if we cannot include this in it, we will definitely have the engineer take a look at it and give a preliminary report to the town on the feasibility of doing some improvements there, yes?
Yeah, because I remember at the last meeting, it was thought that Continental's flooding was mainly from the bridge being washed out and the need for dredging in the water above where the rocks had come down. But like my friend was saying, she's got five pumps, the water does come up on Continental, just like it does on Hasbrook, Robert, and Sheldon. So we really need the drainage too, and then when he hit that underground stream, I was like, there's our water that's rising up in our basement when it doesn't, when the bridge is not broken.
And, and you're right, and it is a high water table in your area.
Yeah.
There's no question about that, I mean, Ashley Way, that's a very high water table with the stream running behind it.
Right, and that was the other thing that was talked about, looking into that stream. Because when we get events like this, we're already high water table.
Right.
When all this drainage, I mean, we know what happens, and, you know, I think you had said those houses were built on swampland, obviously.
It was right, you're, you're absolutely right.
Right.
It was an area that did get wet, it wasn't, it wasn't wetland or swamp.
Right.
But it did have a high water table.
So if we knew that, why are we not included, and here we sit 20 years later?
Well.
You know what I mean? I, I don't understand how the decisions were made, did you drainage in one area and not in another? But it's clear that our whole area from how they were built.
There's no question, Ashley Way has always had a problem, it had a problem before the homes were built. But again, I think if the engineer at least takes a look at the stream and sees what the conditions are, we'd have to see what the options are, you know, with the stream itself. So if we can do anything, if we look at anything, they'll look at Ashley, they'll look at Continental, to see if there's anything that can be done with it.
I think, I think our frustration that you're hearing is just that it seems like Sheldon, Hasbrook, and Robert have a solution that has been brought forward to the federal government, and us on Continental have the same problem, and we're kind of like?
Well, let me just say why, I think one of the reasons, yeah, one of the reasons to say is because, as, as poorly as it is, Robertson and Hasbrook, they have a drainage system antique, built years ago. But they have an existing drainage system that was apparently maybe adequate at one time, it's no longer adequate. So, you know, in that sense, it already was an area that was designed with drainage. Continental does not have any drainage.
Right.
So, but we're willing to look at it.
That's why we're frustrated.
We are, really, I'm telling you, we will have the engineer, we'll have the engineer, if, if we can't get, you know, the modification to the, the application to the Fed, we'll have the engineer start looking at Continental and Ashley and just see what can be done to maybe pick up some of that water and divert it, some water beyond where your properties are. There, there's no reason we can't do that, and the, the engineers do that all the time, so. Anyone else? Yes?
So we, I just wanted to pass this along to the, each one of the board members, I think I gave it to you. So this is a copy of two emails, can I push?
Yeah, come on in.
Okay. So this is a copy of two emails, and our neighbor, Tom, sent it to the Deputy Commissioner in Orange County regarding the golf course in the bridge in Hasbrook. This is a copy of the two emails, and then I was just, and beyond disbelief, and we have trucks just as big and as gold, and like local roads going up and down. At six in the morning, I know that Darren Benson was there this morning, and he mentioned about the fine of two hundred and fifty dollars because they start. So why has not that been done before? Like, two hundred and fifty dollars, is that a daily fine? Is that a monthly fine?
Well, that's what the code, it's a daily fine, that's in the town code.
So think about it, we have been going through this for five months, at seven thousand dollars a month, we would have already raised thirty-five thousand dollars. Because I've been working at six in the morning, six-thirty, for five months.
But when it was brought to our attention.
Can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you. And then, so this is just beyond that. They're damaging the bridge. They're damaging like our backyards. All that, I told them it was related to your, our backyards or homes or basements and everything. Are they going to be wholly responsible for that? I don't know. So my point is then, we are very frustrated, not only for the drainage, it's because it had to become election time for everybody to, "Ooh, be aware. Let's do a meeting. Let's do this." We've been dealing with this for years. There was people who's living in the Hasbrook area for 20 years dealing with the same problem and it has never been addressed. So as like, we're now campaign funds. We want to be acknowledged. We're in the core of Cornwall. It's Main Street and there's our neighborhood. We're part of, like, when people goes around Main Street, they go around our neighborhood to go to Main Street.
What, where?
So we're the face of Cornwall too. And it's, it's just frustrating that all this has never been addressed. And then we want it to be acknowledged, be taken serious, come out with a project of what the plan says. We email you, all of you, mail you, Mr. Rendazzo. We copied to the whole town board with a whole bunch of questions and results of a meeting that you invited us last week. And we haven't heard anything yet. There was a, we have, we have the whole meeting in video too. So if you want to go look back to all the stuff that you guys all say, like, you are welcome to have it. But we're very frustrated because we feel like, out of that meeting, we feel like we are now being, we elected you. I voted for you. So, and then we, our elective officials are now looking after our best interest. It's just not being done.
Well, it is being done.
No, it's not being done because it has not been done. No, but wait, we're not going to debate that. I am finished talking.
Yeah, go ahead, finish up.
Okay, thank you. And then, no, it has come down to the past five months. It comes down to the flooding. Before that was a rain, before that was sandy. It was a shit flood in the, in the, in Hasbrook, like years ago. There's a picture in the newspaper that it was there. There was, the day of the flooding with Aida, in the newspaper that week, it was 10 years ago. It was in the, 10 years ago, the flooding from a previous hurricane. So this is not, is not, it's not good anymore. It's not good. So now, you look at any of our properties and it says FEMA flooding nine out of 10. So that's great. Now we're flooding some. And then we've been looking, they say like, oh, there's not been grants available. They have been. And then all it needs, it needs the commitment of the town itself to provide certain things back and forth. But at least, like this thing with the golf course, we should have been involved. We should have, we don't have to be after you guys to take care of us because we elected you already. So the fact that we have to put complaint after complaint for you to say, "Oh, the trucks are coming at 6:30", that's not good. It's not, it's not a good job.
Well, let me just say this. When the planning board in the spring held the public hearing for the clearing and grading, did you attend the public hearing?
No, sadly, I cannot attend all of it because today is all the school board meeting. So it's probably my time because the school board meeting.
I understand. All I'm saying is the planning board, the planning board in the spring held a public hearing.
I have a job.
They, well, you just said, they've held a public hearing to take public input on the golf course plans, on the clearing and grading permit that they applied for, number one. Number two, yes, the town board has been working for the past few years with regard to the Hasbrook Roberts Road area. We had the aerial survey done a couple of years ago. We've had the, and surveyor had been working tying that survey into the land. The engineer's been working in terms of trying to scoping. And to be perfectly honest with you, you say there were grants available. If there were grants available and we knew about it, we would have applied to them. But the only, the only grants that we have gotten to put in drainage systems have been hazard mitigation grants that came from the federal government after a natural disaster. So that's what we're trying to accomplish right now. And for your area, the good news is, after all the years for the work, preliminary work that this town board has had done, we now have indication from the federal government that they see the plan is eligible for the planning grant. And if they feel that it's worth a planning grant, they're going to feel that the project is worth doing. So we're really on the doorstep of actually getting, finally getting some federal money to actually build the drainage system.
So regarding the plan, the town board being planning, we've been looking at for the past four years. How come we come to a meeting a week ago and the engineer from our town have no clue there is an underwater stream on the Hasbrook?
He's not a magician.
Or the nobody, what's his name?
What did the engineer say to you?
Did he go to your houses?
That's part of the engineering. Part of the engineering is you go out and you gather the data. He said they'll do test borings in the ground. Yes, I'm sure he said that. I was sitting right next to him. That's the part of the engineering. He'll go out there and they'll look at everything involved so that they can design a system that's going to work for the particular layout of the land. So you can't say that the town should have known there's an underground water. I'm sure there's underground water all over the place. But the engineer will find that out with the engineering in terms of trying to address picking up of the water and taking it away. Yes, ma'am?
Do we have a timeframe of when the engineer is going to assess Continental for the same thing that you said, like the drilling and drainage?
Yeah, as far, as far as Continental Road, I think we're all in agreement that if we can't modify the eligibility, we can have the engineer go up there.
So if the federal government denies the amendment?
Then we will have the engineer, absolutely. There's no reason the engineer.
That week or?
Well, I can't tell you whether it's a week or a month. I can tell. But I can tell you that we will talk to the engineer. We'll have the engineer schedule a trip out there to do some preliminary evaluation of what's there and possibly what can be done. He's not going to design a system, but he can at least look at it and see what's feasible. And there's no reason that we can't do that.
And then the town would vote on it, on a drainage system, right?
Well, we'd have to see, yeah, we'd have to see what the results of the engineer, what is the recommendation would be and all. But it'll be a process that we can go through.
And just to tap, you know, tap into that too, so the bridge on Continental and the dredging above it, has any engineer ever put down on that yet or is it just buried in the gas line and then we're taking it from there?
Well, no, it's buried in the federal government. I mean, you know.
The bridge and the?
Yeah, I mean, whatever, it's going to be a whole process that we're going to go through with the federal government, submitting things, documents. They're going to evaluate it. They're going to, you know, have a say in what it's going to do. They're going to put up the money. So it's, it's nothing that any of us have any control over.
Oh, because that's what the FEMA money is going to be.
Correct, the FEMA money.
So, but what I guess what I'm saying is despite, I don't care who pays for it. But what I'm saying is, an engineer is going to look at that and say, "This needs to be dredged at this depth in order for this to accommodate this much water to flow." The bridges, then we have access to those reports that if we keep coming to meetings, we can boil them.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, it's going to take a while. It's just going to take a while to design it. And quite honestly, you know, the angle of the bridge and the walls that they put up, it may be a little different in terms of the walls and all because the, as we were out there with FEMA and they looked at the way the stream has sort of eroded around the edge and there may be more work needed to keep that stream controlled so the water flows under the bridge. And if FEMA's money is this, they will only give you up to what it would cost to replace in time. So if you had a terrible bridge before and you want to build a better bridge, they'll only pay, give the money for the terrible bridge replacement. So we got to see where all that comes out. But that's all going to be to the benefit of the community because now there's no more, it's going to be culvert bridge. It's going to be an open box so that the water can flow. No debris is going to get caught, which is what we experienced before. It'll all flow and hopefully we won't have the overflow.
So if they only give you money for the bad bridge? How do we make sure it's better?
No, no, no. Then the town's, the town's going to have to fund the rest of it.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean.
Is there a non-federal match requirement for the draft given that somebody has non-federal match?
They pay, they pay, I think it's 75%. So even for the whole thing. But if the better-designed bridge is more money, then we're going to have to fund it. Dan?
Was there any movement on, last week you said as far as the personal FEMA money coming into individuals?
We're waiting to hear from the county.
I know, but I know at one point it was denied, but are we still, then everything was sent up. Has there been any movement on that?
No, I have not heard any. But I will say this, and I think to the town's credit, we went out after the storm, we met with the FEMA people, the state people, the county people, met with Congressman Maloney at the bridge, Helen and Virginia, met a team of four people that came down.
Right, they were at my house.
They were at your house. And what we did is we compiled everybody that sent me an email with their damages and all. We compiled that, we got it to the county. And it was put on a spreadsheet. And so they spent, I was, I was at a town that day. But they spent three or four hours going from neighborhood to neighborhood so that they could see. Because the difference between the municipal evaluation, I think the amount from Orange County for municipal damage, for public damage was 1.4 or 5 million. The individual is not based on dollar amounts. They actually come down and sort of just do an individual assessment of the county. And they want the samplings of, you know, some of the worst areas, best areas and what have you. So that's a determination they make based on what they saw during their inspection.
But we have no timeframe when they're going to rule on that?
It should be very soon because it was something, there was some deadline on everything having to be in by, I think, September 29th to them. And that's why they came down 26th or whatever. So, but we have not heard back from them. Yes?
Is it true that they don't care about damaged two basements when they make those assessments? And it has to be on the ground level? A certain percentage of the homes have to be damaged on ground level?
They set the criteria. What they did this time is it had to be basically living space. If it was a basement, it had to be that it damaged your boiler or electrical or something like that. It wasn't because things were stored down there or anything else. So they really have their own criteria that they, they follow based on whatever the declaration is going to be. Yes, sir?
You know, earlier on, there were some issues with the truck traffic on Angola, some safety issues. You know, there's issues, you know, some of us feel that some of the flooding problems were exacerbated by the golf course and what they've done there. There's pictures of a bridge that we showed you that has a crack in it and potentially may make it unsafe. There seems to be, there's so many unknowns about what the construction on that golf course is going to do to our community. And yet, we allow them to continue to build and to move those trucks and create safety issues. It seems like there's too many unknowns to allow it to keep on going. And I'm wondering, and I know the town council is here now, whether there's an injunction that we could put on the work now until we can figure out what these safety issues are, what are the impacts that it's going to have on our environment and to the, you know, the safety of pedestrians who are there. I just don't know why we continue to allow that golf course to move forward when we don't have these answers.
Well, we do have answers. They have approved plans. They have approved stormwater. They have approved clearing and grading plan.
Not all the trucks.
Excuse me, ma'am. Please.
The trucks are another issue. That's actually in violation of their permit and the town will be moving on that very shortly. But as far as the environmental goes, it's all been vetted. It's all been gone over already. There's nothing you can do once they have approved permit.
But I think one of the things, and it was mentioned last week, is they talked about silt coming from the golf course and all. And now, the building inspector was out checking on the, working before 7:00 on Saturday. He was there. I think they started at 6:40. He went back out yesterday. They weren't there. He went back out this morning. Again, they were starting about 6:40. He's going back tomorrow. But he, at a minimum, is going to be citing them for violating by starting work too early on Saturday and today. And we'll see what else comes of that. But I am going to have the engineer take a look at where that driveway is and where there was silting and so forth that came out. I know, I know it did go across because I spoke to the residents on the corner to just see if there's anything there that they should be doing to contain that onto the property. As far as the trucks go, you know, even with these signs that we were hoping to put up on Angola Road, that doesn't stop a truck from coming within that area and making a local delivery.
But do we all know that there were going to be 200 trucks moving up and down these roads in a day? That they were going to be 70,000 pounds heavy?
On Angola Road?
Yeah, going over the bridge that leads from the circle onto Hasbrook.
Well, I don't think there's 200 trucks going from the circle to.
Well.
There are several, but there's, there's 100 trucks going on Angola Road.
Angola, yeah.
Yeah. And West Point is very, like somebody said before, you know, I love West Point. But they usually care more about the communities that surround them. But this time, they've basically shut us off in terms of communication. Their answer to me when I asked the garrison commander about the trucks, because I said, "Why don't they go 293, 6, down to 32? Stay on the state highways." Well, they didn't tell me this, but I found out it would take 10 or 15 minutes longer for them to go. So West Point says, "Look, the contract says, once they leave West Point property, they can take any route that they want." So they didn't do us any favors by just, you know, giving that carte blanche to the truckers because they're going to go the quickest way so they can make the most money. So that's really where we're at with that. We're hoping we can have some success. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Lauren Ruski. I live across the street and I'm grateful for this community. My family's been here about four generations, so I'm really grateful to be here. And this is my first town meeting. So thank you for having this open forum for us to all communicate. I'm curious about the recent sideways sidewalk repaving and, I'm not sure exactly how it's technical terms, but they put the red brick sort of bumpy things in. But I'm just curious as to, and I haven't been to the meetings, but what was the purpose of that? And what was the criteria for the places that they put those new sidewalk placements?
Yes, I can tell you the criteria. First of all, it's a county road. It's a county project. It's not a town project.
Okay.
We do have a couple of spots that were sort of, you know, using their contractor to do up in Main Street across from B C and put a new crosswalk and so forth. But the thing with it is that they're completely repaving the Main Street. And by federal law, if they're doing a complete repave like that, they have to make all the walkways ADA compliant. So that's why you're seeing all the new curb cuts and the red pads and all. That's all with them.
Okay.
Now, the one thing that we did ask, and they got a grant for some of the pedestrian enhancement that they're using for this. Originally, they were going to do a push-button on the traffic light out in front of Town Hall with a crosswalk. They're doing that at Willow Avenue. But what they found with the one across from the Town Hall is, and this is kind of crazy, but they couldn't use the federal funds because the metal pole that holds the traffic light is on town property. So they said, "Even though we only need 20 feet, probably 20 square feet of property, it would probably take two years to get the federal government to allow the grant to go forward until they actually were able to acquire another property." So that's why we asked them to at least try to put a crosswalk near the Town Hall, which they're doing right at the end of the driveway here. Because we have events here, people crossing, it's a very busy road. And at least now, we're going to have a crosswalk here where, you know, boots and crowds that come to the Town Hall will be able to hopefully safely cross.
Okay, great. And so that crosswalk will be put in right where the driveway is and the little doggy bags?
Right where they get the curb cuts, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Carla Castillo, 69 Hasbrook Avenue. I have a number of recommendations since so much of the conversation has been around the impact of flooding. I chair the, I was appointed by the town board to chair the Conservation Advisory Council, one of which is a tree ordinance set of recommendations that we made back in May. As we all know, trees have an amazing absorptive capacity for floodwaters. So that's something that I urged the town to consider sooner rather than later, given that it can have a positive effect on all of the flooding issues that people are considering. Second, the American, the ARPA funds can be used for climate resilience projects that protect against water. So you've already mentioned one use, one eligible use of the funds earlier. Where I work, the Hudson Valley Regional Council, where I'm the deputy director, we're going to be putting out a newsletter in the next couple of days that details the types of uses that are climate resilience focus that will allow for this type of protection, like wetland riparian buffer creation and restoration, rainwater harvesting, tree canopies. There are a number of recommendations for which these, this million dollars that the town is going to be receiving can be used for. Third, FEMA has a community, community rating system program that as the town implements different activities listed in that system, it can, not only does it increase the resiliency of the community to flooding, but it also can, as it accumulates the points, can reduce the cost for insurance for its constituents in the community. So I highly recommend that the town seriously consider that. And on a positive note, I'd like to report on the CCAC's fall cleanup. We had 24 people attend. It was organized by Kate Krimsky, a member of the CCAC. We had two fabulous locations, one recommended by Michael Freeman here, the Sands Ring Cemetery, and also by Bill Thompson, who is another CAC member. That was the Stoll Trailhead. In total, we collected 41 bags, six tires, an I-beam, carpet sections, transmission, scrap metal. And unfortunately, at the Stoll, Stoll Trail, we found a site where people not only like to throw blast files that they've been. like to throw glass bottles that they've been drinking from, but they literally shattered them into pieces so small that they cannot be collected. So if the town and the village were ever able to make, you know, a little bit of a campaign or put this kind of information on their website, it would be really helpful. I'd like to thank Supervisor Randazzo for collecting the waste from the town site, coordinated by Councilwoman Scott, thank you very much, and Mayor Gagliano for coordinating the, the collection from the village site. And, yeah, that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Mike Nielsen, 17 Halverson Road. The issue of the speeding up and down Mailer, I want to thank you for going forth with this study. But in this study, that percentage study that you heard the chief speak about, can't be the only standard that they base the speed on that linear road. There are construction standards that have to be met as well. You know, there's curve on one side, there's no curve on the other side. The closeness, the proximity of the houses to the road, the amount of people that walk on the road, the kids that walk on the road. And this little 3% or 10% of the speeders, I don't want to get hit or have to try to jump out of the way of somebody at 35 miles an hour before the chief can cite them. The speed on that road needs to be lowered. I'm a little bit out of loss here too, 'cause I came prepared, I thought I did, I filed a follow request 10 days ago with the town, I got absolutely nothing back. And so did Alicia Fleece, she filed one as well, for information, got nothing back.
No, our office did, the phone received it.
No, no, I didn't get a phone call, I didn't get a text, I didn't get anything. And she just requests, she just told me as well, she didn't get anything.
Did you go through the web, the IT on website?
I've thrown it through the website, no.
That's why you haven't done it. That goes to New Windsor IT.
Well-
If you're better off sending me a direct email to town clerk@cornwallny.gov, we answer it within five business days.
I went to your website-
When it goes to New Windsor, sometimes we don't get them.
I went to your email on your website, and I put it in like that.
I think we're gonna take that down.
Yeah.
Take that down.
Because it gets forward.
It goes directly to New Windsor.
Yeah, it gets, but if you have it, sir-
Next time, next time I'll, I'll type it up on my typewriter and I'll give it to you.
Yeah, cornwallny.gov.
I have no problem, I'll, I'll get it to you-
Yes, please.
And, and drop it off to you.
And I will max you within five days.
Because the questions that I had were based on the study that has it based at 30 mile an hour speed limit on the road.
Well, that's one of the reasons, quite honestly, in talking to the traffic engineer, he can look at the entire picture.
But we're gonna make sure that he just doesn't base it off of that-
No, 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 let me just clarify. The chief, he's gonna provide the information to me, he's gonna look at it based on whatever the standard is, but he will, if, if he has to do a speed study, then he will do the speed study.
I understand, that's what I'm, what I'm saying is, that's only one standard. There are many standards that come to play to set the speed on that road.
And that's what, that's what this expert would be able to bring to us.
Okay, and we'll, and we'll be able to get that information?
If, when the board approves whatever level of study we're gonna have, then yeah, once that report's generated, it's, it's available to the public.
That's what I thought when I followed my forward.
Yeah, no, it will, it will be. Whatever results we get of the study will make it public and you'll be able to get a copy.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Hey, sir, Jeremy Schleidel, 123 Mailer, about the, the traffic on Mailer. I appreciate all the work you've been doing. I understand that we're a, a small road like any other road and, and we get complaints about speeding all around the place, but one thing that, that concerns me is when we talk about excessive speed that's based on the posted speed limit. And so I did a little digging in the town minutes, and it was a big win back in 1985 when the town passed the area speed limit of 30 miles per hour. But when it was passed, there wasn't a study done necessarily, that was just the best they could do at the time to, to solve the most problems in a very short period of time. Prior to that, it was a road-by-road application to go from 55 through this intense traffic study, right, to get a reasonable speed. So again, as we start to look at this, I appreciate the change in, in language from our last meeting, where we started at, you know, we can't go below 30. It seems like we've made some headway on that, and I do appreciate it, sir. Also, looking at the density of driveways, we, we're not the only small town who is, is discussing speed, right? We know New York City, as, as a major city, lower to 25, but some small towns that are very similar, we had the town of Lewisboro, who took all of their minor collector roads using a connection with their New York State Legislature, got their, all of their minor collector roads at 25 miles per hour. And when I hear the chief brief, what I'm hearing is, he can't pull over. First it was four miles per hour over, but then it was 36. And so I understand that, that we, we haven't given him the tools to be able to enforce safe speeds on our roads. So, sir, if that's $4,000 or $6,000 and we can plan out three to five years and tackle some of the larger roads that we have a problem with, let's do that. $6,000 is a very small price to pay to keep my kiddos around.
There's, there's no question. But I just want to say too, if, have this engineer look at it. He is, well, 'cause I've talked to him specifically about a reduction to 25, he's very familiar with the state program, so he would be able to advise the board on that, what it would take to do it, what kind of information he'd have to develop for it and all.[1701.25]